Welcome to the Board of Education's meeting. May I have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion to go into closed session pursuant to the general provision Article 3-305 and 3-104, I move we go into closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of employees, appointees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, any other personnel matter that affects one or more specified individuals to perform administrative functions and to consult with counsel.
May I have a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. We'll see you back here at 6:00 PM.
Oh, that's right. Yeah. Welcome to the February 7th Board of Education meeting. This is a public meeting that is being videotaped for county citizens to review on QAC-TV, Channel 7, a local cable station. The agenda is available on the information table. During this time, we ask that you turn off your cellphones and hold personal conversations and comments outside of the meeting room. We will now stand and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty, and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda for January 10th?
No.
February 7th.
Yeah, today's the agenda, just approving the agenda.
Approve the agenda, I'm sorry. Sorry. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve today's agenda.
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. Approval of the minutes for January 10th, January 24th, and January 31st, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
May I have a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. Dr. Kane, if you would lead us through the recognitions at this time?
Okay, this afternoon or this evening, we're going to start with some very special recognitions. First, we're going to start with our National Board Certified Teachers, and I see that we have a nice crowd here tonight to support our teachers. Just for some background, National Board Certification was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to generate ongoing improvements in schools nationwide. It's the most respected professional certification available in K through 12 schools. Teachers receiving this award tonight have demonstrated standards-based evidence of the positive effect that they have had on student learning in alignment with five core propositions. Based on those five core propositions, National Board standards were created, and they defined what accomplished teachers should know and be able to do. There are 25 certificate areas. Within those 25 certificate areas, there are 16 different subject areas, and those are acquired at four different developmental levels for teachers so that they may become certified. Candidates for National Board Certification must exhibit a deep understanding of their students' content knowledge, use of data and assessments, and teaching practice. They must also participate in learning communities and provide evidence of ongoing reflection and continuous learning. There's consensus among researchers and practitioners that teacher quality is the most important school-based factor determining how well a student will learn. Just last month, our own Queen Anne's County Public Schools budget survey revealed that high levels of student achievement, along with graduation from college and producing career and civic-ready students, is a top priority. Creating and sustaining a teaching workforce defined by accomplished teachers actually makes the achievement of those priorities possible. So there's a quote that I'd like to share with you. You've probably heard it before. "The mediocre teacher tells, the good teacher explains, the superior teacher demonstrates, and the great teacher inspires." There are more than 112,000 teachers across the United States who've achieved National Board Certification. On this evening in Queen Anne's County Public Schools, we will honor eight of them. They will be from elementary, middle, and high school levels. So honorees, I'm going to ask that you please come forward when I call your name, and each of our accomplished teachers will wear proudly a pen, a lapel pen, that I'm going to present to them as this is their official penning ceremony, and they will wear that proudly in recognition of the great accomplishments that they've made in their earning this certification. So I'm going to ask that board members come with me down to the front.
And I have Dr. Pearson, who is going to assist me. So, again, Queen Anne's County Public Schools is proud to announce six teachers at the beginning and two new teachers for 2016. So we have 2017, so we have six teachers, and then we have two additional teachers from the prior year. These teachers devoted a tremendous amount of time, effort, and energy in earning this achievement, and so we'd just like to recognize them right now. So for the new National Board Certified Teachers, we'll begin with Ms. Jessica Collier, who is Queen Anne's County High School Algebra, Trigonometry, and Honors Pre-Calc teacher. Please come forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lauren Pippen. Lauren Pippen is from Bayside Elementary School. She is a teacher of Health and Physical Education for grades three through five. Is Lauren here this evening? Okay, so Lauren was not able to make it, but please let's give her a round of applause to recognize her. Next, we have Rebecca Ritz, and Rebecca is a teacher from Kent Island High School who teaches biomedical science. Kelly Nash is a teacher from Stevensville Middle School. She teaches English Language Arts for grade eight. Alice Tickler from Churchill Elementary School is a first-grade teacher. Please join us and congratulate Ms. Tickler.
Congratulations.
And then we have Ms. Sherry Valenti from Mata Peak Elementary School, who is a math specialist.
Thank you very much.
The next two teachers I'd like to recognize were not able to attend their penning ceremony last year, so we're going to do it this year, and that is Ms. Catherine Lang, Kennard Elementary School. She is a teacher of Special Education. And then, of course, there's a teacher that you know, probably, and that is Ms. Marsha McNeil, who is also Teacher of the Year from Centerville Middle School, eighth grade math and algebra. So once again, we congratulate our teachers, our National Board Certified Teachers. Give them once again a round of applause. And certainly, we'll get pictures, but certainly I would remiss if I did not ask those who are here to support these National Board Certified Teachers to please stand, because we know that they didn't get here by themselves. This is a three-year process for the new teachers. It was a process that was a little bit different for the teachers who were here before or who earned this before. That's right, we need to recognize you. Thank you for your support and encouragement, and again, congratulations to our National Board Certified Teachers. Well done. And so we will continue with our recognitions in just a little bit at the, we're going to break and we're going to allow some refreshments for just a little bit, but we're going to continue with our recognitions for February. Now, Mr. Chip Brittingham and Wayne Humphries normally do our Energizer Bunny Awards. They were not able to be here tonight, and I'd also like to tell you that we are getting a new Energizer Bunny, so we're going to show this one, but our recipients are going to get some new bunnies. So we'll show this tonight, but you'll get some new ones, they're on the way. For our Energizer Bunny Award recipient, Michelle Milligan, she is the Administrative Secretary at Stevensville Middle School. Michelle is a dynamo in the office. Her unbelievable extent of knowledge at Stevensville Middle School, didn't I just see you yesterday? Is illustrated as she helps everyone in the building be successful from clocking in to clocking out. She lends an ear to all students as firm reminders of rules as well as a shoulder to cry on. She does the same for teachers. Michelle keeps the office running smoothly, especially during busy times, and she was right there yesterday to help us as we came through, so congratulations. And your principal is here?
Yes.
Come on down, Ms. Downs. Is there anyone else that you have here with you?
My husband?
Well, let's bring your husband forward.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Do I want to bring a bunny?
Yes, yes, please take the picture with it.
Okay. All right. Here we go. Congratulations. Okay, our next award is the Shining Star Award, and this award goes to Ms. Markell Millier. Actually, that's Miller. She is the shining star, another shining star, at Stevensville Middle School. So come on down, Ms. Miller. Ms. Miller's worked tirelessly to assist students in both their academic endeavors as well as social and emotional wellness. She places high priority on all students and makes them feel as special and unique as they are. Ms. Miller's first day coincided with the student's first day, so she hit the ground running. And I have to say also that she accompanied her students, who are members of the Superintendent's Advisory, to their first meeting, so thank you for doing that as well. Her ability to learn while working with new platforms and programs has helped Stevensville Middle School achieve great strides in creating personalized schedules designed to meet the needs of the students, as well as help students adjust to middle school socially. Thank you, Ms. Miller. We applaud you. Continue to be a shining star that others may emulate.
Thank you.
And this is your Shining Star Award. Now, I'm going to give you the box as well.
Okay.
And who else do you have? Come on, Ms. Downs.
My mom.
And you've got your mom here, come on down.
And Ms. Vitas.
Come on down. And next, we have our Queen Anne's County Hero Award recipient, who is Jeremiah Bailey It is my pleasure to introduce Jeremiah Bailey for this Hero Award. Jeremiah is a very responsible, motivated, and caring student. Through her many obstacles, she still makes it to school with a smile on her face and has excitement for learning. She excels in all the subjects, and I am especially impressed with her strength and dedication. In addition to her academic excellence, Jeremiah is also a model student and an inspiration to her classmates and staff at Stevensville Middle School. She's a champion for others, and we are very proud of you and welcome you to the Heroes Club. And I think I saw you in math class on yesterday, didn't I? Congratulations. Medal for you. Now, who do you have with you today?
My lovely mother.
And your principal?
Excuse me.
It's just a Stevensville Middle School type of night. So our Difference Maker Award recipient is Lee Vitas. Reading specialist at Stevensville Middle School, please come forward once again. Ms. Vitas has worked tirelessly this year to assist students and teachers with interventions and test administration. Her dedication to students is evident in her hands-on approach to helping students. Her goal of closing the achievement gap for all students, specifically students receiving special education and English Language Learner Services, is clear, and she is realizing that success. Students feel safe and successful in her hands, and teachers appreciate her help and guidance. We look forward to you continuing to make a great difference in the lives of students. Congratulations, Ms. Vitas. So we've got some goodies for you. We can leave this here so it's not so difficult to hold on to for your picture. Pick it up on the way out. You're unwelcome and welcome. And Ms. Vitas, we know that you have Ms. Downs here with you, and do you have anybody else here with you?
My, Ms. Miller.
Come on, Ms. Miller. And lastly, but certainly not least, we have our Spirit Award recipient, and that goes to Marlene Stanton, physical education teacher at Stevensville Middle School. Please come down. Ms. Stanton is a spirited teacher, both in the classroom and throughout the building. Her enthusiasm for her job transferred to the students, and her love of communication with families is exhibited in her role as webmaster and social media manager for Stevensville Middle School. She shares in celebrations and informs families of happenings as the school moves forward. Ms. Stanton has volunteered to stand in as teacher specialist, as the current teacher specialist is out on maternity leave, and will be instrumental in a seamless semester regarding testing. Congratulations and keep up that great spirit, Ms. Stanton. Do you have anyone that you would like to bring forward? So you got your family, tell us who you brought with you tonight.
My three children.
All right. You got the whole family. And, board members, would you like to highlight any of your community involvement over the past month? Started on that side, so we'll start on this side. Captain Kelly?
Thank you. I did attend a Legislative Committee meeting with MAB, and there's a couple of key things to let you all know about. There's a, they went over some of the legislation that was going on, and you can read that on their website. There was one that I thought was key, was, it's Senate Bill 132, which is crimes, child abuse, and neglect, failure to report, and they're making that a misdemeanor if people do not report it, when they knowingly fail to report. That was a change for anyone dealing or noticing child abuse in the system. There's another item that was discussed, and it's the Kruen Commission legislation. As you understand, they had a commission meet, and the original purpose of it was to deal with funding issues, and it's kind of basically trying to figure out how we do MOE, you know, the funding formulas that you need for things. We had, that was, we were all excited they were doing that, but this initial year of work on the commission, they didn't address funding at all. They addressed a bunch of other items, so just quickly, their first thing they're asking is to extend the commission so they can, in fact, start looking at funding also. They also, or these are some recommendations they're going to, they want the General Assembly to consider this year. One of them is establishing a Career and Technical Education Group to look at the CTE programs and the needs of Maryland business community, to develop rigorous CTE pathways. They look, want to, recommend to expand the program that established the Maryland Teaching Fellows Scholarship, make sure it's fully funded. They're looking to expand the current program of early childhood education by increasing funding for pre-K grants that exist out there. So there's still, pre-K funding is still hot on the agenda. They want to establish a grant program for jurisdictions of schools with high concentrations of poverty to provide additional academic instruction through after-school and summer programs, and require an assessment of those programs to see if they're resulting in good learning objectives and outcomes. They also want to require Maryland State Department of Education to develop a comprehensive recruitment program to get the top 25% of the graduates from high schools in each system to encourage them to become teachers. They also recommending a study of the cost of providing special ed services to the schools, be contracted to do that, and then another one, the last one, they, one of the recommendations, to establish a program to provide tutoring services for struggling learners that would supplement classroom instruction, with a priority on reading for students in elementary schools that serve communities with high concentrations of poverty. So these are some key things they're making, recommendations they're making to the General Assembly this year. And then if they can get extended, then they hopefully will start working on the budgetary items and the funding issues for school systems. That's it.
Thank you. I attended a human trafficking seminar at Kent Island Library this month, and it was very informative, very scary, and I recommend that all parents, grandparents, godparents, aunts, uncles, any adult who's responsible for a child, any young adult who's responsible for themselves, to really be careful where you go on the internet, what you post, where you delve into. It's very easy to fall through the cracks into this terrible situation, and it was quite eye-opening for me. There was a lot of rallying in the audience about it needing to be a school item. I hear that a lot. It's really easy for everybody to say everything needs to be in the schools and put all of the responsibility on our educators, but it's equally our responsibility as young teenagers, parents of even middle school children, know that there are locks and there are precautions that you can put into force where they can't sway out into this big black hole that really does exist, and it's very easy to find. So I really enjoyed that. I also was able to attend the CTE Business Tour, where the Board of Education partnered with our Chamber of Commerce and some local partnerships. We had a facilitator, we had a field trip onto school buses to several businesses in the community that are very interested in offering our students internships in the summer as well as during the school year, businesses that we may not even know exist, and our program is to introduce it to our students and make them aware that they have these internships. Some are paid, some are not paid. There's a whole lot of business opportunities out there, and the businesses are clamoring to support our students, and that was the key thing that I carried away. Ms. Miller was in my group, and I enjoyed meeting her for my first time, and there were community leaders, educators from our system. PD was, Professional Development was part of their day there. There was a big thank-tank meeting at the end where everybody brought together what they had earned from the situation and what they thought might be solutions. There will probably be a future committee built to just be able to connect these two groups, these businesses who have opportunities for learning and working, and students who are dying to be doing that. So it was very, very informative, and I was delighted to be able to attend, and that was all I was able to do this month.
I guess I'm up.
I really didn't have much to do this month, other than Sellersville Elementary School and Sellersville Middle School on Monday, yeah, Monday, we weren't at school on Monday, Monday. We started the Black History Month, and we had, we did the National Readers for Black History, and then on February 16th, which is next Friday evening, we will be doing the African-American Heritage Dinner at Sellersville Middle School that starts at 6:00 o'clock, that will bring the African-American culture in. You can see as far back as some of the, some of the people have the information that they bring in there, and then we have a wonderful dinner, and so we invite everyone to that.
Thank you, Annette.
Well, January is full of budget work sessions, so attended both of those. One of the best things I did was got to go with many of our students to the Allshore Band Tryouts that were held in Mardella Springs High School. Eight counties from the eastern shore have students audition for this band. There are two bands, a senior and a middle school, and they both have approximately 80 students in each band. Queen Anne's County had a total of 51 students try out, and 30 of them will be representing Queen Anne's County in the band. If you break that down, 10% of the senior allshore band are from Queen Anne's County. Nearly 30% of the Queen Anne's County students will represent the middle school band. It's quite an honor. They work really, really hard, and the concert will be held in Salisbury this year, April 14th at 7:00 o'clock. Also, I got to attend the high school orientation last night with my son at Queen Anne's County High School for incoming freshmen. Principal Amy Hudock did a fantastic job, and her staff spoke so well. They explained the scheduling plan, and they really They explained, um, the scheduling plan, and they really eased the parents' concerns. And this Saturday is the County History Day Competition at Queen Anne's County High School, which I will be also attending.
Um, I did a few things this month. I was fortunate enough to be able to attend on January 18th, the Queen Anne's County Chamber of Commerce Breakfast, where Dr. Kane presented on the state of the schools. A lot of great positive messages, a lot of good reception there. I was very pleased to be a part of that. A slide stood out to me in her presentation that I just feel like I want to shed light on, and that is just a troubling 20-year trend. In 1997, about 55% of the county's expenditures were allotted to the Queen Anne's County Public School System. 20 years later, we're looking at about 41.48%. So that's about a 10% decrease in what the county's actual expenditures are to the Queen Anne's County Public School System, and I just want to keep digging in and finding out why that is. So, other than that, it was a great, great presentation, and you did a wonderful job. I, um, have daughters that play in the rec league of basketball, so I bounce all over every Saturday, all over the county, from Sellersville down to Stevensville, so I get a chance to see the structure of all these different schools where my children do not attend, but I get to see them through their basketball playing at this point, so I hope to go back and visit them during my time here on the board in another role. Um, let's see. I also attended the Queen Anne's County Class of 2022 Orientation last night at the high school, and I agree, it was, it was well organized, it spoke to the students as well as really scared parents like me, and laid out the different pathways that are available, so I was pleased to see that in my role as a parent in the community. Um, and that was pretty much the last month, so that's it.
Busy, busy, busy.
Yes.
Dr. Kane, would you like to share your events for the last month?
Yes, and I apologize in advance if I, if I missed something. Um, so, we did have a very busy month. We, um, I went over to Chesapeake Community College, and we celebrated Martin Luther King Jr. Day with lots of different, um, community from not only Queen Anne's County, but our five neighbors, our five neighboring counties, and that was a very, very, uh, nice event, and they also recognized a, a well-known educator from Queen Anne's County Public Schools. We started our superintendent advisory committees or councils this month, so on January 24th, I was able to meet with our student advisory, our staff advisory, and our parent advisory. It was an awesome day, it was a busy day, it was an awesome day. Our students mostly, we talked about technology devices, and, and they, uh, one student had taken a survey, and, and we talked about what ought to happen from the perspective of students, so that was a very informative day. With parents and with staff, we really did go over the budget survey, and so that they could understand what the responses were, and we had some conversations about where we ought to move, in which direction we ought to move. So it was a very, uh, it was a very informative day, and, and I was glad to get such feedback from our families and, and our, our staff and our students, and I'm really looking forward to our next, um, meeting. And on January 18th, yes, I certainly was able to, um, present, uh, state of the schools for the Chamber of Commerce Kickoff Breakfast, and thank you, Ms. Connor, for, uh, O'Connor, for, um, your comments on that. It was a, um, it was eye-opening for some, but it was information that others well-knew, but, um, it was a great opportunity, and a great opportunity to collaborate, so I'm grateful for that. Same day, I went to a professional development seminar on managing multiple priorities as one of my goals. I'm supposed to continue my own professional development, so I'm certainly headed in the right direction there. We had, on January the 23rd, principal supervisor regional, um, training, so there are new standards that Mr. Peluski, uh, present, will present later this evening, and Ms. Pauls, and, uh, we learned a bit about how we ought to approach those standards, and the background, how those standards came to be, so that was very informative. I was able to attend the Queen Anne's County High School, um, Winter Showcase, the meet and greet, and I know that Ms. Hudock was here earlier today, and again, that was a very well-put-together activity. Lots of families were available to, um, see the different programs and things that are going on at that school, in addition to a student versus the staff hockey game at the end, so that was just a fun night for everybody. Um, there are a few other events. On January 22nd, the superintendent group from the Eastern Shore, we met with legislators for the Eastern Shore, and certainly Delegate Aaronson, several others were there, so that was a great time to be able to sit down and talk with them. I was able to read to students at Sellersville Elementary School this past Monday for Black History Month, and, uh, there are lots and lots of things that are going on, so we're just excited about the engagement of our board members and our staff, and, uh, and certainly always welcomed in the schools and, and looking at some great things that are going on. I'm sure Mr. Peal will talk about the fact that our superintendent monitoring visits have resumed again, so we're in the second round of three rounds, and those are going quite well. But I just would like to, um, offer a couple of reminders. One is that on March the 29th, that will be a school day, so as you know, the current school calendar allotted four snow days. We've used those four snow days, and so now we're looking at March 29th, that's Thursday, which was originally for spring break, but you held that day on the approved calendar, so March 29th will be a school day. Now, if in fact we use another day, which we don't have, then that means that I have no recourse, but I will send a letter to, uh, the State Department asking for a waiver of the 180-day school year, because there are no other days that we are legally able to, uh, take away from our calendar, so, um, that, that's pretty much a done deal. So that will happen, and if that happens, I will certainly put a communication out to, to the public, so that everyone is on the same page. And, uh, just one other reminder is, um, a little early, but students who turn four, or children who turn four years old by September 1st of 2018, they are eligible to apply for pre-K. So pre-K, um, families are selected, number one, on two priorities first, so students who receive or who qualify for free and reduced-priced meals, um, students who happen to be homeless, students who, uh, receive special education services, those students have priority seats in our pre-K program as mandated by Maryland State Department of Education. So those programs, um, will begin registration, or that program, I should say, the pre-K registration will begin on April 12th at all of our elementary schools. So, just wanted to put that out there as a reminder, and, um, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. We'll move on to Mr. Peluski at this time.
Good evening. Two, two very quick things I just wanted to highlight. One, I had a great opportunity to represent, uh, Dr. Kane on Monday, the 29th, at the first, really, business-community education tour. Uh, I'd like to recognize Mr. Adam Tully, uh, our new supervisor of Career and Technology Education Social Studies, and his work that he's done with Linda Friday of our Business, Chamber of Commerce, to put an exciting day together for our career and technology education teachers. They had an opportunity to meet, uh, Mrs. Harlow was there as well. They had an opportunity to learn a little bit about a profile of a local business, uh, visit that business, be able to understand the workforce need of that business, understand the skills. Uh, it was a great, great opportunity, there were two buses and two groups. Uh, couldn't say more enough about the work, um, that Mr. Tully is doing under superintendent's direction to, to deepen our relationship with our, our business community, um, which has been fantastic, and we'll continue to expand upon that. The second thing I wanted to elaborate on, as superintendent said, we're in our second round, uh, of our, uh, school site visits. You remember, we had done this in the month of October, as well as in the month of, um, the beginning of November. We just started those, uh, the beginning of this month, so we'll put our second round together, so, uh, stay tuned for a summary of that, probably sometime in March or April. That will continue our system-level monitoring, uh, of instruction. We've got a lot of great people that are doing a lot of great things for kids and, and working really hard, um, and it shows.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to our student board members. Who'd like to go first?
I'll go.
Alrighty, go ahead, Ms. Grace.
Okay, so our second semester at Kent Island High School has just started, and we are once again using a virtual back-to-school night to get students and parents acquainted with new teachers and classes. On February 13th, we are hosting a pathway night from 4:30 to 6:30 PM, where department chairs and counselors will be available to answer any questions. Um, the spring sports orientation is going to be held on February 21st, starting at 6:30 PM in the auditorium, and our opening night for Kent Island High School's musical, The Music Man, is on March 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. A little spot connection.
Hello. So, to start, Queen Anne's County High, I would like to thank the local businesses, community organizations, and high school staff for supporting our Winter Showcase Meet and Greet. Everyone's time and effort to support this event is greatly appreciated. Thank you to the parents and students who attended and participated. Queen Anne's National Honor Society will be holding their 5K Color Run on March 17th at 8:00 AM at the Queen Anne's County High School. The fee is $15 for students and 25 for adults. To register, just check Facebook and click on the 5K Color Run link. This event will benefit Compass Regional Hospice. We hope to see you there. On January 21st, we lost one of our own. Danny McCreery was a senior and an avid fan of theater. He spent much of his time in the library with Ms. Taylor, or in the auditorium rehearsing and spending time with theater kids. He was kind, mischievous, and fu, and a funny student that is loved and missed by all. We send our prayers to the McCreerys, and I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for Danny.
Thank you, dear.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to move on to the community participation. Um, we ask all speakers to keep in mind the following guidelines, please. Speakers should sign the roster, including their telephone number and address, and we would like you to give us your name and your, um, just the town you live in, or the part of the county you live in, not your specific address. Comments should, on, on the sheet, your specific address, but we would just like to know where you are when you're up here talking to us. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length. Comments longer than two minutes should be submitted in writing. Questions or statements to the board should relate to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the board has authority. Please do not discuss, discuss items related to negotiations. Those items are to be discussed at the bargaining table. This is not the proper avenue to address specific student or employee personnel matters, especially those matters on legal appeal to the board. Comments about the actions or statements of individual staff members are not appropriate for public comment, and should be referred to the Superintendent of Schools for processing through, um, available channels. Citizen participation is not intended to be a question-and-answer session. If you have a specific question, the board will make sure an appropriate staff member responds to your question at a later date. The board respects your desire and right to convey your message freely, but asks of courtesy to the board and our citizens that you respect the board's request to refrain from naming citizens and name-calling when offering your critique. And we have just one person signed up at this point, Mr. Richard, Richard McNeil.
He wasn't sitting in the back on purpose, but it was full in the front.
Drops and stuff, Mr. McNeil.
Please do the trick. Good evening. My name is Richard McNeil, and, uh, I'm representing the retired educators and, uh, and myself on two different things. One, I'd like to, I know as you're working through the budget, as you heard me say, we appreciate, we being the retired group, appreciate the support, continued support for the healthcare package that, uh, we have, and, uh, ask that you continue to do that as you make your way through that budget process, which I know can be very arduous and time-consuming. Last month, I mentioned the monies that come in for the casinos, uh, was the amount that was originally set up for the support of technology programs and other programs in the educational budget. Uh, if you watched the news last week, uh, there is a proposed bill, uh, in the General Assembly to start with next year, 25% of that money actually going into an educational fund, the following year, 50%, 75, so that in four years, it would be 100%. Whether it gets out of committee or not would be a big question, so I encourage everybody who has anything to, uh, do with that, to help support that getting out of committee to at least gets on to a debate on the floor. Um, I apologize, I can't remember the Senator's name who put that bill in place, but they, it is in place for that, at least for that part of it. It was interesting also that if you listen to the State of the Union, President Trump mentioned the need, uh, for vocational programs. Uh, I consider that an old term, we call it more career and technology programs. Uh, be interesting, interesting to see if he follows up through, and if Congress can push some money into school systems to update our programs. I know, um, it can be a very expensive program because of just the materials that are needed to maintain all of those career pathways and so forth. Um, one last thing, and, and then I'll, I'll get out of here. Um, and I know that you're all busy, but the first two weekends in March, as you heard, the plays, uh, the musicals at both high schools will start. Where in this county can you go for great entertainment for less than $10? And, um, you know, we've got some very, very talented people, um, and I look forward to seeing both the music and, uh, musical, and, um, I encourage us and everybody listening to get out and support the schools and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? Okay, we'll close public assignments. At this time, we would, uh, move on to air presentations. Dr. Kane?
So we don't have, um, our national board-certified teachers left to, to share some refreshments with, so we'll, we'll just go ahead and get started. Our first presentation, uh, with Mr. Peluski and Ms. Pauls is going to be about those professional standards for education leaders.
Good evening, Mrs. Paul, Ms. Pauls.
Good evening. Dr. Kane, Ms. DiMaggio, and board members.
Yes, I know that. Good evening again. For the record, my name is Greg Peluski, Assistant Superintendent, joined by my esteemed colleague, uh, Janet Pauls, our Program Director of Teacher and Leadership Development. And this evening, what we'd like to share with you is a brief overview of how the standards for our educational leaders, uh, will be changing in the 2018, 2019, uh, year. Excuse me while we, little click happy there. So, one of the things that, purposeful to highlight is that the purpose of the standard, number one, of our educational leaders, is to improve the academic improvement, improvement of all students, improving teaching and learning. The second piece of that is really to grow our leaders, uh, to expand in areas, uh, that the research indicates that of the leadership skill and knowledge ability that it takes to be a highly effective leader. And the last piece of that is really to have an evaluation process, uh, that is fair, that gives administrators, uh, adequate feedback in areas in which they can improve, um, overall. I will preface this with, uh, most recently, as, as Dr. Kane had mentioned, there was a state-level professional development, uh, that was attended by Dr. Kane, Ms. Pauls, uh, as well as Mr. Farley. Unfortunately, I could not attend that, uh, due to having the flu myself. Uh, however, the, really what we want to share with you this evening is a little bit, um, of the educator effectiveness data. This will be state-level data that Ms. Pauls will share, really the discussion of why the transition between the current standards and the professional standards for educational leaders, some of the, the rubric, the things that were shared at the training, uh, the process that we will go through, uh, in the locally-developed evaluation process, and upcoming professional development experiences.
So we know the role of the principal is a multifaceted job, uh, and the most critical, one of the most critical jobs in our, um, system, and they serve as the instructional leader, that is their overall goal, as well as being able to manage the building, the budget, evaluate teachers, be very involved in the community, create a positive school climate, and of course, enforce behavior. So the new model that was developed, um, and it was developed to be able to build relationships with stakeholders through collaborative practices, and also to build on effective practices. So it's a little bit different than the older model that we have, but it still has, uh, 50% professional practices, and then on the other column for assessment-informed growth, it still has student growth for 50%. The, each of the clusters came from the Maryland Instructional Leadership Framework, and you can see them listed. Some of them are similar or the same as the clusters that we had in the past, such as Vision. vision, but curriculum and instruction, but there are many new ones. Culture, observation, and evaluation has always been one of the major roles, but technology and data's new professional development has been around, but it had a different name. And then stakeholder engagement. And then the ISLAC standards, the International School Leaders Licenseur Consortium standards, really looks at operations and budgets, communications, school and community, integrity, fairness, and ethics. And then for student growth, it really looks at a whole school growth model. So in the past three years, you can see the data that came from the state level, and you can see that there has been an increase in highly effective over the years. And I think a few, maybe last month, maybe Dr. or Mr. Brown shared Queen Anne's County principal data with you all, and I think we had 70% highly effective and 20%, so you can see where we rank with the state. So there are 10 standards now opposed to the four clusters that we had before. In the past, we only had professional learning, instruction, and assessment, school environment, and vision. We currently now, for the new proposal, is 10 standards, and you can see those standards. Standard one has always been around. Standard two is new. We are now really strongly monitoring ethics. And standard three, equity, and curriculum and instruction will always be around. And then five is new, where we're looking at the academic and social-emotional support for our students and staff members and the total school environment. And then standards six to 10, we're looking at the capacity of our personnel, and that is looking at recruitment and hiring, staff turnover, and performance ratings, and professional community for teachers and staff, which really looks at workplace conditions, leadership opportunities, and school-wide processes. And then, how do we engage the community? Are we able to establish a network of partners with our family and our communities? And then operations, being able to manage resources and budgets, and then school improvement, which is a shared accountability measure. So they kind of clustered the standards so that they would be a little bit easy. They really are all student-centered, and it's really talking about high expectations for all. So they felt as though, and I apologize, this was, it's a little bit hard to see, but it's the graphic that they gave us. So they've clustered one, two, and three together, six, seven, eight, and nine, which looks at the community, and then of course, four and five, which is the curriculum instruction and being able to care for our students, because we can't teach them if we don't care for them, and then 10 being overall school improvement. And the premise was really focused on all types of student support, equity, inclusiveness, social justice, care, trust, and continuous improvement. So the professional standards for educational leaders now have a rubric that before counties had kind of developed their own rubric, but they gave us the rubric this time, and for each of the standards. And I did leave a copy that you could see much better with Ms. Wright, because this is a little bit hard to see. And I do have a packet of all 10 standards that we get, or a rubric for all 10 standards that we can send out as well. But they will be rated highly effective, effective, developing, and ineffective, and developing is new. We've always done that in Queen Anne's County, but it wasn't reported to the state. The state is now saying we will rate them as developing. And it also guides ongoing professional development, learning experiences for principals and supervisors. But the rubric at the meeting, we actually had the opportunity to unpack the rubric, and we worked in small groups, and we had principals, superintendents, directors, just a mixture of folks there to provide input. And they've had four regional meetings where everyone around the state would have the opportunity to provide input on the rubric. So we talked about the four performance levels, and you can see what the indicators are for each of those levels. Again, developing is new, and the rubric for each of the standards spells out what it would look like for each of those performance levels. So after the presentation, the next steps would be, if we plan on using the state model, and Dr. Kane, you might want to jump in here, we would send a letter signed by the superintendent stating that we will use the state model as it is written, and the timeline for that process is August 2018, and LSDE will provide feedback by September 2018. And if we plan on developing a model, we also have to submit a letter signed by the superintendent, and a timeline for that evaluation process is very close to the same, and we have to show a crosswalk to our developed model to the professional standards. And just one quick comment. Thank you, Ms. Pauls. We will continue to use the model from the state. I think it's the most reliable model that we have. A lot of metrics would need to be done if we were to try to create our own, and quite frankly, I don't think that we have the staff or the time to handle that, so we'll use the state. And some upcoming events. They have training to be able to evaluate, and that's spring of 2018. It's a one-day training. Principal and Assistant Principal Workshops, which will be held during the summer for two days. Promising Principal Academy, which teaches promising principals about budgets and evaluations and being able to manage a building, and this will begin late summer, and it'll be a year-long training. And then Turnaround Leadership Academy, and that's for low-performing schools. And again, that begins the same as Promising Principals late summer, and it will be year-long. So they're really going to focus on building the capacity of all staff members, and also some focus on teacher evaluation as well. Questions?
This academy, are those put on by the state, or we, okay, so this is totally a state?
Sure. Totally state.
Is it major changes from what you've been doing in the past, or is it going to be an easy transition for the principals to understand what the new requirements are?
Well, one of the things that they recommended was that we kind of cluster and focus on at least three to four standards per year, although they would be responsible, of course, for the student growth, and that would slowly acclimate the principals to the change in the standards.
And I also think, Captain Kelly, that there are certainly areas, such as school improvement, that we often talk about, that is now a standalone standard by itself. That's work that they already do. However, I think it's drawing more focus and attention to key areas of research that we know that leaders need to have the knowledge and skills in, and I think it draws attention to that. Another big one that it really draws attention to is equity, and I know that you've heard Dr. Kane talk a lot about that. The audit talks a lot about that. Those are things that are meant to draw a complete focus on the work that we know in raising the academic achievement of all students.
But it will be a gradual release model. We would, I think it would be very difficult to go from four clusters to 10 clusters for principals, even though a lot of what they do on a daily basis is already embedded, and, you know, they already deal with the budget, the operations, and all of that, so. But it is, it is different.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So 7.02, our next presentation, Professional Development School Partnerships. We have Ms. Passan, Curriculum Instruction Supervisor for English Language Arts, grades three to 12, and Ms. Michelle Johnson, Elementary Education Field Experience Coordinator for Teacher Certification and Administration from Washington College. Please welcome them.
Thank you. Good evening, President DiMaggio, Dr. Kane, members of the board, and the executive team. I am Bridget Passan, the ELA Supervisor for grades three through 12. One of my other exciting roles with the counties is the PDS Central Office Liaison, so I'm excited to have a special guest here tonight. Let her introduce herself.
My name is Michelle Johnson, and I am the Field Experience Coordinator for Elementary, even though I also get a chance to observe at the secondary level every now and then. I would like to say three, and they left, I wanted to talk about them, three of your National Board Certified Teachers are, they're our mentor teachers, and two of them had the pleasure of my children, so.
Isn't that wonderful? Great, all right. So. Our purpose here tonight is to share information regarding the Professional Development School Partnership between Washington College and Queen Anne's County Public Schools. What we really want to highlight is the work that we're doing in our schools to support our mentors, as Michelle referenced, our site coordinators in each building, and most especially, the interns participating in the teacher certification program. So Michelle's going to take over from here and explain the program to you.
I did too many.
Go back.
I'm a MAC person. Well, the Professional Development School Partnership, it began going on 18 years ago under a formal memorandum of understanding. So we have a formal, signed memorandum of understanding between the school system and Washington College and Kent County Public Schools. So it is a tri, it's three entities under the formal memorandum of understanding. In Queen Anne's County, we have two elementary schools, two middle schools, and one high school. So Churchill Elementary, Sudlersville Elementary, Centerville Middle, Sudlersville Middle, and Queen Anne's County High. So PDS is, it's a, it makes the school a teacher-training site, and we share resources so that we can provide field intern, field experiences and internships to pre-service teachers, we can provide differentiation to the students, and we enhance the school faculty and staff as a community, as a community of learners. So, at our elementary sites, Churchill and Sudlersville, each semester, eight to 10 field experience students are placed. So right now, I have nine students at Churchill and about seven at Sudlersville, and two are at Sudlersville Middle, because we use the fifth grades at Sudlersville Middle as part of our elementary program. So what does this mean? So in 2013, 2014, we had 15 interns. Six of those interns actually teach right now in Queen Anne's County. That next year, the interns who are doing their 100-day full internship, they go to Kent County, and we have the field experience students in Queen Anne's County. 2015, 2016, we had six interns. Yes, numbers are going down across the state and nationally when it comes to students choosing, or young people choosing to go to college to do traditional teaching programs. There's so many non-traditional options out there. But one student was hired. This, in 2016, 2017, we had six interns, and none of them stayed in Queen Anne's County. At the secondary level, Centerville Middle, Sudlersville Middle, and Queen Anne's County High, we place about six to eight field experience students. So the field experience students, they are not doing their full student teaching internship. When students come to Washington College, they can do a field experience freshman year. In fact, we encourage one freshman year, one sophomore year. At the elementary level, they do two during their junior year as part of their reading courses, and then their senior year at the elementary level. And at the secondary level, they are doing their student teaching. So in 2013 and 14, we had four interns. Queen Anne's County hired two. 2015, 2016, three, and none were hired in Queen Anne's County. 2017 and 2018, this is where we're here now, four interns finished their secondary internship. No, you have not hired any yet, but two were math, and they interned at Queen Anne's County High, and I'm hoping that Queen Anne's County may become their home after they graduate in May. I'm going to let Bridget. So governance, when we think about PDS, we are, PDS, the state requires institutions of higher ed to develop PDS partnerships if they want to be Maryland-approved programs to certify teachers. So yes, it was mandated by Maryland, but we love it. We love working with our partner counties, and we operate under the standards for Maryland Professional Development Schools. And I, you all have access to a copy of those standards. We have a PDS, we're governed by a PDS Steering Committee, which includes central office personnel from both counties, so Bridget, that's her role in Queen Anne's County. The principals from each school. A site coordinator is identified at each school. It is that person's role to manage day-to-day. If there's an issue with an intern, the site coordinator comes to me. If the intern has an issue or the field experience student has an issue, they go to the site coordinator at that school. And our site coordinators are amazing. The Steering Committee, I should, the site coordinators, they are implementing the policy. They're placing the interns and field students. They're the point, they're that point of contact in the building. The Washington College liaisons, that would be me, and then I have a partner at the secondary level. We coordinate with the site coordinators, and we prepare the pre-service teachers for the PDS sites. If there's an issue that the site coordinators, they want the students prepared with something that is county-specific ahead of time, we will do that according to school improvement plans. Our Steering Committee, I put it there, our Steering Committee meets quarterly, but the whole committee actually meets two times, and our site coordinators, we meet all four times quarterly. They meet with the liaisons. We have a Google Docs folder where we are continuously sharing information, and that information includes a lot of curriculum materials, so we'll have a little micro-PD moment at our meetings. And our PDS partnership is formally evaluated every seven years by MSD. This is actually a poster that we have put up in schools, and it's half of it, and the second half will be the next slide, but we, and I'm not going to highlight all of these, we like to share the benefit to school systems and parents, this is something that we put up, the parents get to see also. So one of the things that PDS will do, it's a benefit, it lowers the student-teacher ratio through co-teaching. So our interns are prepared to co-teach with their mentor teachers. What's great about, we try to set up this structure so that, right now, let's, I have four students at Churchill who are, they're doing their field experience in conjunction with their reading courses. So they're working with those teachers. Jackie Wilhelm knows that these students may be your interns for next semester. They're going to be there now, they're there now. They'll be there all their senior year. So they're really starting to take a look at these students, and these students are, they're getting to know the school community, and it's really over a two-year period that they're really part of that school community. A benefit is that we're building a professional learning community. Our field students support small group enrichment or reinforcement of whatever their host teacher wants them to do with the students. I'm not going to go through all of these, but I'll go down to the end. We provide certification renewal opportunities for teachers who supervise interns. So the teachers get MSD credit if they supervise interns. The teachers who are host teachers for students who are also taking their reading courses, they also get one CTE credit. And this last slide, benefits to school systems in the future. This, multiple opportunities for principals to observe prospective teachers in the classroom. I always tell our students, especially if they tell me ahead of time that they want to teach in this county, oh, you start your job interview the minute you go into that school to... school to do your student teaching internship. It's an excellent recruitment tool for interns who know the school system and culture and the curriculum. Hopefully, when our teachers are hired, they can hit the ground running with a clear understanding of the Maryland classroom requirements. I will skip down. It promotes collaboration through developing shared understanding of pertinent topics, concerns, research. That's, we really use our committee meetings, our steering committee meetings and our site coordinators' meetings to collaborate. It provides opportunities for cross-fertilization between higher education and public schools to operate in one another's areas. I will say that most of our adjuncts who are teaching methods courses, they're teachers in the public schools. We have had, Mrs. Paul is back there. You'll be with us in the fall? So we really utilize the professionals that we work with, and trust me, our students, they, listen to them a little more than they really want to listen to me because they're like, they know what they're doing. They'll listen to me when they take intro to special at diversity inclusion. But we want to save any time for you all to ask me any questions.
Why do we have so few interns?
It's the number of students who want to, Washington College is a small liberal arts college. We have Teach for America coming, the New Teacher Project, Urban Teachers, they come, and students can go that route who they want to teach. Not all students want to do the traditional certification route. I will also say, we have a rigorous program. We have eight students, seven students coming up, but that seven students may have been 15 students during early field experience. We want to make sure we put strong students in the 100-day internship.
Right, okay. It's not like it would be at a university that's more keyed towards education.
We, at Washington College, if a student is interested in becoming a teacher, they do not major in education. They have a content major, and they do the education program, and they must meet rigorous requirements. For example, Maryland State does not require students to, elementary teachers, to take content, the four content area praxis. So a math praxis, a science praxis, an ELA praxis, and a social studies praxis. We require students to take those four individual tests and meet our cutoff scores.
So a smaller program, smaller number of interns?
Small, yeah, smaller program, rigorous program. That's my favorite word, smaller number of interns. But good, strong interns.
Thank you.
Oh, and here's our.
Money, money-wise, is there?
So of course, as it always goes, when we first started our PDS partnership, there was grant funds from the state, and we were able to pay mentor teachers for training. We were, we get a little bit creative now, and the college, the different departments, they want to reach out, and so we can, sometimes we find money at the college to do extra things. But yes, money is, we can go after grants. We've gotten grants in the past to extend programming, to do more professional development. We are going to bring some math professional development into our PDS schools. We're working with the principals now, and the college, we can find money to pay for certain things. I don't want to say it's always going to be there.
Thank you very much, and thank you for joining us, Ms. Johnson. Thank you, Ms. Passan.
Thank you.
And at this point, Ms. Langraff, would you like to share the monthly expenditure report?
Sure. Once again, you have two expenditure reports posted to Board Docs. One, report number one is the 30,000-foot view that gives you basically by category what we've spent year-to-date. And just to give you some reference point, I looked at last year. At this point in the year, our total report obligated funds, we have 91% of our funds are obligated at this point in the year. Last year, we were only two one-hundredths of a difference in what we had obligated. So we're right on target for where we should be. The one area of concern for me, I thought, was in operations. Right now, if you look at the second page of the second report under operations, under other charges, this is where our utility bills are, and we haven't had a very mild winter this year, unfortunately, and we have really been racking up some expenses there. But truthfully, we're really not far off where we were this time last year. So that gave me some relief. And later in the board meeting, we will be requesting a transfer of funds to cover some of the areas that are now showing a overage in the budget. Any questions on that? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Langraff.
Thank you.
At this time, we are scheduled to take a break. Does anyone want to take a break, or do we want to continue moving on? Well, I guess that means we'll continue to move on. The HR report, Mr. Farley?
I'd like to recommend that the board adopt the HR report as presented.
I make a motion that we accept the HR report as presented in closed session.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Now we'll move on to the transportation report.
Yes, we have one bus driver, Mr. Billy Clow, that would like to replace bus 7505. It's in his 13th year. Mr. Clow has experienced some problems with that bus, and I'd like to add that that bus is used mainly in the northern sector, so it's racked up some miles, and he also drives the evening late run at Queen Anne's County High School. So Mr. Clow is looking to replace that bus next year.
I make a motion that we allow Mr. Billy Clow to replace bus number 7505.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Ms. Langraff will move to the budget transfer.
Before you, you have a letter that's written to the county commissioners requesting that we transfer funds between categories. Basically, we've talked about this in several months, and this is transportation for special needs students and especially for homeless students. We have several homeless students, some that are in Talbot County, that we have to pick up and transport every day. And then we have special needs students that are across the bridge that we're transporting every day. And our transportation budget is currently over for salaries, and I have projected what we're going to need between now and the end of the year, and we need to move $250,000 into transportation to cover this. And we have identified funds between special education salaries and instructional salaries where, through the normal process of attrition, those funds are left, so we're asking that that be moved for that. In addition to that, we're asking for funds to be moved out of instruction into administration in the amount of $55,000. And this is, we have a proposal to perform a comprehensive compensation study, which is part of what we need to do to revamp our, negotiate our salary scales. So we're requesting money for that. Also, we have had a consultant helping us with website design and development, and someone helping us with some of our policy review. So we would like to move funds to cover those expenses, and that would be $55,000. So I'm requesting your approval to send this letter to the county commissioners requesting money to be transferred.
Can I get a little description on the comprehensive compensation study? I don't remember discussing that.
I couldn't quite hear you.
Comprehensive compensation study, what?
A compensation study is normally done by first looking at the classifications of all the positions, and then gathering market information in order to prepare for us to engage with our union colleagues in determining what is an appropriate compensation structure. How could we approach this? By combining information and looking at the positions and determining what is an appropriate market-based wage as we move through a collective bargaining process or making a recommendation to the superintendent or the board on a compensation structure that's appropriate for recruiting and retaining the most highly competent teachers and staff.
How much is that?
The proposal was for $35,000 for all of our, for all of our people, which would include recommended structures as well as classification review.
Have we ever done this before?
Not to my knowledge. But it's been done. The company has done it in a lot of different school districts and a lot of different municipalities. This particular company did Queen Anne's County most recently, and that's, we got the name of the company from the county, Bev Churchill, and they were able to give us that same kind of financial treatment as a piggyback opportunity.
I just kind of wanted to see how long it had been since, but if it's never been done, that's the answer.
Well, that's part of the thing, and you know, it is, compensation is a negotiable item, and that's something we would like to engage in discussions with our union colleagues.
But we were independently doing this compensation for just Queen Anne's County, or are there other counties? Because our competitor is other counties, it's not.
So we gather financial data on compensation through groups like the Maryland Negotiating Service and MAB, but that's not as exacting as it needs to be because we're not always looking at apples to apples. And so the process needs to be one where we first describe the positions as they exist here, and then hold them up in a market comparison that's effective and where people find it to be credible. And only through that credibility and an objective third-party review can you really have an effective process. It's what it takes.
And it would be all of our employees?
That's my understanding from the proposal, yes.
Could our step structure be affected?
I'm sorry?
Could our step structure be affected?
The proposal says they will make a recommendation. Now, what we actually come to terms about, you know, that's up to the parties, and we should make a recommendation that helps us to recruit and retain the best qualified people.
Especially, we've never done that.
So why, I'm just understanding, what problem are we trying to solve here?
I think, you know, I don't want to speak for the superintendent, but I will say that we have some people among our support ranks who are below the poverty level. We have difficulty in recruiting and retaining people in critical shortage teaching positions. So I would say objectively, some of our compensation structures are so compressed that people feel that they don't see rewards in their later careers. Those are some of the problems I think we have to face.
Thank you, Mr. Farley. And in addition to that, you mentioned work with the job classification as well as job descriptions, and ours have, they are in dire need of some work. And since we can't find evidence that this has happened in the past, when we make recommendations, we are making recommendations on data that might not be, as Mr. Farley calls it, as exacting as it really ought to be. So sometimes you have to, you know, invest in a product, which would be some very good recommendations, some sound recommendations from a company that has experience, extensive experience in this area, in order to make the right recommendations to this board.
And it could work on both ends of the spectrum. We could find we have some very overpaid positions based on job description, as well as very underpaid positions based on.
They are a third party with absolutely no investment in what, they will produce a report that shows their findings. So we very well may find some positions, I'm not going to say people, some positions that don't have accurate job descriptions, and we very well may find some positions that don't have a salary that is compensatory with that job that they do.
That's my point. Great, thank you so much.
Madam Superintendent, if I may, I would just like to add to that two things to draw the board's attention to. Number one, if you look at, go back to the curriculum audit, governance and leadership, it talked about the lack of job descriptions. And so with that, having the job description and making sure that there's fair compensation to that, I think you had mentioned that. The other thing is the legislative audit that we had, it did draw some attention to looking at this issue as well. So there are two pieces of evidence there that indicate that this is something that we need to be doing as a school system that moves forward.
Are they analyzing our job descriptions as they exist, or analyzing what they should be, or what?
To some extent, I think employees need to have a voice in job descriptions. Some folks say that they haven't seen job descriptions. That's some feedback that we've heard recently. So this is part of the comprehensive nature of the classification review, is getting, hearing people about what they say their jobs are, validating that with supervisors, making sure that fits with the thinking of the school district about the jobs we need. And then those finding comparable matches with jobs in the marketplace so that we can effectively benchmark our jobs. Not every job has a perfect match, but that's, when we say comprehensive, that's what we're talking about.
No. Okay. So we will now move on to future action items. 10.01 Policies for First Read, inclement weather policy. Oh, I'm sorry. Look, I'm jumping ahead here. Sorry about that, Ms. Robin.
That's okay. Do I have approval to send this to the county commissioners?
There you go.
I have motioned that we approve to send the transfer letter to the county commissioners. Thank you, Robin.
You have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Now we'll move on to future action items. 10.01 Policies for the First Read, inclement weather, policy number 426, and inclement weather regulation, regulation number 426.1, Pender.
Yes, this policy deals with the reporting times during inclement weather, states the purpose, the definition of it. The last time that this policy was updated was in 2013. So what we've done is take several documents that were spread across different areas, and we combine it into one regulation so that people can easily find that information. So putting that up for review.
And Code of Ethics Policy number 104.
So our Code of Ethics was originally implemented in 2012. This draft brings it into the new format and adds a couple of features, which you'll note in red, stating a purpose, expanding the language to include employees responsible for the school district's purchasing and contracting practices and procedures, as well as adding a definition for what a business entity is. That's pretty much it, and saying, you know, essentially who this applies to. We're in the process now of extending the financial disclosure forms and clarifying who those disclosure forms need to be completed by. So this is sent to you for information at this time, and we'll follow back up for action.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the inclement weather policy number 426 and Code of Ethics Policy number 104 to go to our stakeholders for first read? Policy number 104 to go to our stakeholders for First Read?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. At this time, we're back to citizen participation. If there's anyone here that would like to speak that did not speak at the first one, please come forward at this time, state your name and your address. Okay. So, future meetings and events, our next budget work session meeting will be held here on February 14th to be followed by February 21st, another budget work session, and then March 7th, the board meeting. And the budget will be presented by the superintendent. Is there anything, anyone, that we forgot that we need to speak about? Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you and good night.